Time for morning workshop. Uh, uh-huh, I'd have to time got away from me. Um, we'll review our financials for September and quarterly reports.
Good morning, Madam Chair, Commissioners.
Good morning.
Good morning.
We have a couple of extra reports to look at today, but let's start off with the cash balance report. Basically, this top sheet lists all the cash that we have. This is the old report, and this report we're going to replace with the, with another document that's immediately behind that. This first page was developed to give the Board and the leadership a general idea of what kind of cash we have access to. And the key difference between this single-page document versus the second one, which is a comprehensive list of all cash that we have titled to under the city, are the MEAG, the municipal competitive trust. While those dollars are earmarked for the city and in trust for the city, they are not reported on the city's financials at the end of the year. So, the cash balance report would list, will list everything that we have that will show up on the comprehensive annual report. If you'd like, I can walk you through that second document.
Please.
Well, just want you to know, we are so pleased to have $1.33 in our SPOLOST fund. I know it's... Who said we weren't doing well?
Interest earnings, sir, yes. Okay, moving on to that second document there, the cash and investments. The first page lists all the operating cash that we have under the city by fund, not necessarily by account, but by fund. So, it's roughly 9.8 million as of June 30th, and then we have, as of September, 6.8 in operating, restricted 2.2, and then 2, 2,069 in reserved. And those are the specifically capacity recovery fees, SPOLOST projects, anything that's restricted legally towards, by legal guidance, or whether it's Board's, Board's request. So, the second page lists all the investments that we have, roughly 15 million as of June 30th. And that, you can see that number's gone up a little bit for September. And then if you move into page three on down, down the line, it will now detail the first page by fund. So, page three lists all the cash accounts that we have in the general fund. And then we also show the, the investments, the fire bond reserve, which is held in the general fund. And then on the side, third, page four there, we've got the confiscated assets, the CDBG accounts, moving on through. And if we go to another key page would be the electric and water. So, if we go to page 14, you'll see the breakdown of cash that we have in the water and wastewater fund. And we see that we have 2,002 debt service reserve for two and a quarter million on it. And then we also have the wastewater emergency fund of 1.1 million, and that is sitting with Morgan Stanley. Some of the titles need to be updated yet. They say Morgan Keegan, but those investments were moved at the beginning of this year toward, with Morgan Stanley. And then in the electric side, we have, on this next page there, 15, to show the utility customer deposit, the $3 million, that's sitting in an investment portfolio as well.
How often do you, do people request their deposits back?
That would be ongoing as, as they satisfy, it would, a couple of things take place. One is they have to satisfy, satisfy the, the payment history requirement. And then that would be applied then towards the next bill. If they close out the account and they've had good credit, then at that point, the deposit liability would also be liquidated.
Could you hold up in court on that business about the two-year deal to get the deposit back, time repayments that they have to make every month for two years to get their deposit back? Isn't that a personal decision by one of you all that you make for the customer?
We have, there's, there's an organizational policy, and Bill would be best able to speak to that, but we do have an organizational policy that stipulates...
Right, well, I understand that. I was just curious.
That's a pretty standard process throughout the...
It may be, but I, I still say, would it hold up in court?
Yeah, I think it would.
I believe it would. I disagree with you.
Unless you have any questions, I'd like to move on if, if we can. Mr. Baye, are you okay with all these misinformation? Anytime anybody has any questions, please feel free. Moving on to the next report, we have the interim statements by fund. It's the next document. It'll list the operating revenues and the operating expenses. First line will be taxes. The first sheet represents consolidation for the city, all funds across the board. And right now, our target is roughly 25% because we're three quarters, we're a quarter of the way into the year. And one of the things that's going to pop out right off the bat will be the general property taxes. The property tax bills have gone out later this year, and so the due date will be around the end of December, so we can expect some of those funds to come in towards the end of December, but more than likely, they'll hit in January.
Well, that should be 60 days after date of mailing.
Correct.
It's probably, it's probably January now, yeah.
Well, there is also a tax incentive. If they get the taxes paid by December 31, then it can be itemized on the tax return. So, there's an advantage to both.
What is the holdup?
They're doing the fire, they're having to re-advertise the fire district tax at this point.
Because they raised it 29%.
Yeah, I, I read all that, but I didn't know. I thought that somebody had told me that they had gotten that resolved, but I guess they didn't.
Well, they still have the period of advertising, and it won't be until November. They're already getting the bills prepared, but they're planning to send those out by June 6th.
We'll get them before the end of the year, if we pay them, that'll be our, to our advantage.
Yes, ma'am. The other item would be the business licenses. Those are either annual or quarterly, and this is September, so the bills may have gone out at this point, and we can expect to see some of those dollars come in in October, November, December, and at the beginning of the year.
In regards to shortfall of property tax potentially, cash flow wise, you don't anticipate having to come to us for a TAN or anything?
No, that's one of the, one of my comments here. I'm, I don't anticipate issuing a TAN like the county has, has proposed. We are financially, we're monitoring our dollars, we're, we're scheduling our capital outlay in accordance, so we're kind of balancing the budget here, thank you, to manage the cash so we can accommodate payroll and the liabilities that are associated with the business.
Marcus, on this, on this report, referring to business licenses, are those your occupation taxes, or are those up under what says business taxes, some of them?
Those specifically are the franchise taxes. That would be the, the electric, the electric one, we have a 90...
But under the licenses and permits, is that your occupation tax, or is that a true...
License and permits.
Or is that the true business license, such as your alcohol licenses, your tax cabs, whatnot?
Good point. We have business taxes, which is your business occupation taxes, and that rolls under your business tax line, which would be the fourth line down on that first page there.
So, those are actually bills that we used to send out in March of every year?
Right, right.
Do we still send them out in March?
Yes, yes, ma'am. And those are different than the, the, I apologize, I may have said business licenses. What I was referring to was the franchise fees. Franchise taxes. All right. Any other questions?
We usually get that big check in December, don't we?
There are a couple that we get. Let me make a note here. The insurance premium tax, which we budgeted $1.3 million, that came in, in October, and we actually, the dollar came in $25,000 less than what we anticipated.
Okay.
And I'll, I'll address that in the financial status report. That's part of the, that'll be part of that discussion there. But yes, that, that came a little bit off the mark. Any other questions on the financials as a whole?
On, Dr. Keller, on the water sales, I see that you're at 33% already. Cow eatin', all that, they're, the water going out where it's supposed to be, are they taking more or less?
There is an average.
Average.
Next document would be the SPOLOST review, and it looks like we're pretty much on target with the local, special purpose, local option sales tax. This is SPOLOST. I'm sorry, that's, that should be lost, yes. Single page, just before the quarterly status report. And that was my typo on that one. I'll take the incorrect for that.
Are you doing a similar report like this for SPOLOST as well, in terms of income coming in?
I have not. I've only created one, and that was a while back, just to get an understanding of where we think SPOLOST may be headed. If the Board wishes, we can sort of track that a little bit more. I do show in the quarterly status report, some of the SPOLOST numbers. If the Board wishes, we can have a similar document prepared. And maybe we can combine both the lost and the SPOLOST in one page. Okay, well, we'll see what we can put together then.
And they're depositing that money directly? There's no delay in terms of us receiving that money?
No, sir, that...
It comes straight to us from harbor revenue?
The SPOLOST money is actually held with the Bank of Melon New York, and we have to submit invoices for the drawdown request. So, we'll actually get them paid.
But it's going to our account where our interest is drawn on? We make the interest on it?
We have an account with the Bank of New York Melon, and they are the trustees for the entire SPOLOST program. We have a separate account from, from the county, so our portion goes automatically into that account. And then we submit the invoices to, to the Bank of New York, and then they'll release the funds accordingly. All right, moving into the quarterly status report. First off, I want to ask a question. Are your pages six, seven, five, six, seven, eight, nine, are they blank, or are they populated? Okay. I apologize for the printing. Here are fresh reports.
That's the only ones I understood.
I thought we were just adding the right questions and drawing pictures, but we thought of pictures.
You were just saying it would pay attention, weren't you?
That adds several more pages to my confusion. Thank you. We're going to give it to Phil to recycle.
It goes in my recycling bin, yes, sir. All right, just real quick, it looks like there's some economic news here, sort of conflicting. The markets are up, markets are down, unemployment rate rates still continue to hang out there, which directly translates into, you know, consumer spending and so forth. But the point is, I threw these articles out here just to show that there is no fixed direction that the market's headed at the moment. We're still in limbo. There, some say the disposable income and consumer spending is tending to trend up. On the other hand, they're saying that unemployment's still high, but that's going to be a driver for the spending. So, as long as unemployment continues to, to hold its course, I think the, the economic trending will be somewhat flat and limited at best. The Rockefeller Institute of Government, they basically discuss the unemployment or the employment sector relative to the, to the type of industry, whether it's private, state, or local. And it looks like private industry, based on one of the original, initial charts there in figure one, that they've really, the private sector's really let go a lot of employees, and that translates to the unemployment numbers. And now, we're starting to see some of those effects trickle into the, the state, local, and the, the local governments, as well as the local and education.
Well, the bright spot is the federal government's got, is up on their employment. They hire more people.
Right, they've implemented with the, with the TARP programs, with the, specifically the TARP is, was a key employer for that.
I'm being cynical over here.
No, it's, it's true. Unemployment numbers for the city, I've also, this year now included, thanks to Fred, we were able to show Griffin's unemployment numbers as well. Last year, we showed the state and Spalding, and I'm on page nine of 21. Apologize for moving fast. If I go too quick, just tell me to slow down. So, the benchmark here on that graph, on July 2009, Griffin had a 19.6 unemployment rate. So, now we can see that we're trending downward, so our, our people are getting employed. And it's still higher than, than most, most areas, but we are trending downward, which is a good thing. Page 10 basically reviews the, the type of revenue streams we have for the general fund, between taxes, fines and forfeitures, charges for services. Those are the bigger ones. Property tax is obviously going to be the largest. And overall, it looks like the overall revenues are going to be trending at this point on target. I think it's still premature to render a final opinion on this, but we'll have a better shot after the, after December and into January as to where those collections are going to fall for the property tax revenues. So, that'll give us an idea as to whether or not SPOLOST and the local option sales tax will continue.
We have to renegotiate lost next calendar year after the census, or?
We did it in 2002 before, so it will be 2012, I believe.
2012. 12, so we ended up okay.
Well, actually, it's the end of 2011, I think, is the deadline for renegotiation, like December 31st.
It is, 2002. Why would it be, I know we've got to redistrict, but the, I thought it was big. I don't know. Didn't really matter, we haven't do it.
You know, in relation to that, some governments are already hiring consultants to gear up for that process. I don't know if y'all have given any thought or consideration to the Gwinnett County...
We're going to need more than consultants. We'll probably need some psychiatrists as well.
Is the Gwinnett County case, has that been resolved yet?
Yeah.
No, it's still in court.
That's still, well...
Don't you print that, Matt. That was off the record.
He was a slut.
I think we need to sell tickets to our negotiation, well, that's my thing.
It was interesting before.
All right, moving on to page 12, that gives us the breakdown of the taxes and where we, where we at this point feel that our property tax will shake out. Looks like we're going to be on target. The, the two areas of concern would be in the franchise fees. We're going to, we're going to investigate some of those numbers there, and the liquor taxes. I'm hoping that the liquor taxes, taxes will continue to go up with, with the October days and some of the other items that have come through. So, I'm expecting to see some numbers.
How do you do that? Now, I mean, they've, they actually made the brew on, on beer. So, how do y'all account for that? You build the, the individual makers of the brew, or what? Because I know before you did the distributor, the distributors have to send the money in.
They, the state somehow portions it out, I'm not sure exactly, but they all pay it back to the state itself, and I think the insurance and the...
And then we have, we have a program here locally where Michelle Johnson, our tax license, we collect the beer and liquor taxes as well.
Now, we collect them off the retailers.
Correct.
But the wholesale, I think, is still all state.
Moving on to page 13, towards the middle of the lower portion of that page there, you see a breakdown of the city's lost for the month versus the last 12 months versus the current fiscal year. And it also shows then the Spalding County portion, the, the Board's SPOLOST, and the Spalding County Board of Education, the ELOST. What we do not have here is a breakdown of the city's portion, because there are other entities involved with the SPOLOST program.
God, what?
Yes, sir.
What was the reason? What was the reason you said we didn't have the breakdown of the city?
Because the, our, the SPOLOST program at the state level only reports the total number at the Department of Revenue. I would have to go in there now and get the contracts from every participant and do an estimated breakdown of what those proceeds would be by entity. We have the IDA, we have the city, we have Orchard Hills branch, we have, who else participated?
Sunnyside.
Sunnyside, Orchard Hill, City and Town. So, we would have to get, right. And the Department of Revenue only reports one number to us, and that...
And you have bonded projects which have priority over excess collections projects? There's no simple answer to that.
And the, just, the last, the last projection that it provided on the SPOLOST showed roughly a 5, 5.6% lag in the collection rate. So, that translates for us roughly about a half a million dollars worth of projects that we may need to shift either off to the side as a reserve. And it's a little early to say that, because we're just at the first stages of the game. We still have another couple of years to go in collections. So, those monies may come in eventually, if the market goes up. Page 14 is a summary of our property taxes and the milit rate and the digest. Page 15 goes into the license and permit revenues. If we have any questions, seems like we're going to be on target with those this year.
You know, we're on target for a lot of things, because we made our targets so low. You keep saying we're on target, but we set our targets really low, so it'd be nice to be above target.
Well, if the numbers are in the positive, we could technically say we're above target.
That's just a useless sedentary comment.
You know, he might as well give up this morning, because I don't think he's sharp enough to, to torch. He stayed out too late last night.
Page 17, our charges for services. Page 18, fines and forfeitures. And a snapshot of trends where we anticipate. And then page 19 would be our other revenue sources, such as investment incomes and rents and royalties, et cetera.
So, very good document. Thank you for printing it out for us.
Thank you.
Very good.
Amazing wealth of information.
Any other questions, or anything else we'd like to talk about?
Good job, Ms. Ward.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Okay, move into...
Morning.
Good morning.
Hard to beat that exciting presentation on finances, but I'll try to at least keep you humored a short period of time. Basically, what we have in front of you is a highly sophisticated algebraic equation. We came up with these statistics real easy. It's worn past on the edge of the road, visuals, presence of pedestrians walking in the street, and previous requests. So, that's A squared plus B squared equals C squared. So, the bottom line is, we had to come up with something that we felt like we've been looking at, and we wanted to give this to y'all, so y'all could make some comments, and we'd like to be able to finalize this document. And as Marcus alluded, what the city of Griffin obviously is doing, just like we're doing with paving and the sidewalks, is we'll put a five-year plan together on this SPOLOST. Hey, I said that right. Ooh, better write that down.
Close, close.
That's close enough. And we will, then you will have, be able to talk to your citizens where this is going. You'll have the roadmap in your hand. Apologize for the map, but I'm going to leave this for y'all, so after, I have a big one here that you can look at that's a little bit better than what shows up in that small piece of paper. We tried to do some connectivity around town, both on the north side and south side. Obviously, you can always put more, you can put less, but this kind of works out in the formula, and we would appreciate your feedback. And I really would just like any questions that you might have on this, instead of, you know...
On Airport Road, coming off the Joanne Todd sidewalk connector system there on Zebon Road, you can maybe run a little section there to Airport Road Park, get folks walking the hill down, access.
And that presents a good caveat, too. If you notice in here, there's four asterisks, where people have the opportunity to try to move in and around Griffin. One on Pine Hill Road, another one on Carver, and Ms. Ward, this is the one we've been trying to address for you. You know the right-of-way quits. We can't tie Tuskegee back around because it's in the county right-of-way. If we have an opportunity to sit down and talk to the county about, you know, if this is something that you want to do, we could work out those four things, and I think it'd be really good for the citizens. And Mr. Holberg will make note of that comment also.
And I know that we're not having any requests lately, but did we decide that building the sidewalk, to continue the sidewalk on Hill Street beyond the creek there, up, up to the Crescent Road intersection, was just going to be too expensive to do it?
We're working on that. When you say it's drawn in on here now...
Where, I don't see it on here.
Look where the airport's at.
Where the airport, and it connects all the way back into Tillman.
Okay.
Okay?
You're looking on your map? I can't, the map's so small.
I'm sorry, that's why I'm going to leave you the big one, because I know...
All right, I'll come look at the big one.
Yes, ma'am.
So, I can, good, that's good, thank you.
And up at, I know we're going to be taking care of walking folks, folks walking to Griffin High School, Spalding High School, that area's in front of the county, it's also part of the city property. There's a, there's a sidewalk at the Marathon Gas Station. There are children that'll walk in from that direction all the way down to, it's going to be Futral Road, and we've got the new sidewalk the county put in there. Basically, it's high ground, you in. We may want to talk to the county as well, see if we can partner with them on Futral Road.
Just remember that the identified dollar amount in the SPOLOST for this particular SPOLOST, unless you add additional funds, is right at 500,000. It's 490,000 and change, okay? So, if you want to change something or swap some...
Maybe the doorwork can come up with something.
Yeah.
Well, I've got a, I'm pleased to see in my district some that really need it, but there's a big hole here, and that's in the subdivision back over here, what's the name of the subdivision? Is it Melrose?
Yeah, I don't, there's not a name for it, but I, I know where you're at, yeah.
Sidewalk on Linden Avenue there.
Yes, there is, there's a sidewalk there.
But that way, from there all the way down, I, my mind's gone blank on those streets, but there, there are no sidewalks anywhere in that area.
You talk about overage and behind the old, behind the Howard Johnson, is that where you're talking about?
No, I'm talking about...
No, he's talking about by Linden, Rushden Mill area, or Dury Street and all that, is correct?
Yeah, you're coming south out of there, behind the Salvation Army building back in there. There's a whole subdivision, not one sidewalk in there.
We'll look at the right-of-way. One of the things that predicated this is the, the size of the right-of-way, and we'll look at that. But you, you just need to be prepared to tell me what you want to give or take.
Well, I want someone...
Well, I want someone in Joyance District moved over to mine, that's what I want.
That's above my pay grade, I believe y'all don't.
Well, you got Maple Drive, $69,000 is.
Well, it's also third district, too.
Yeah, Maple Drive is portion, but on South Hill Street, Etheridge Mill, I think you've, you've got four, too, I believe you've got, that should be four, it's three districts. Uh, South Hill Street, Etheridge Mill, Miller Avenue, uh, I believe that's part of Ryan's District and District Four.
We'll take a look.
Uh, coming from Everian Road, uh, down Beck Street to Ann Street, where the school sits, it's, it's not a sidewalk there.
Um, we have Beck Street on Everian Road from Ann Street, uh, as the last one on the list. And then we have another connector on that also, so we're trying to tie in all the way from the city park up to Everian Road.
Okay, here's Beck here.
With Beck Street, Beck Street, Pimento's got new sidewalk as well as, um, running a lot of the apartments there. Raymond Head Park, that's got a new sidewalk being proposed.
Uh, yes, but not from Everian Road. I think it has, uh, I don't think it has a sidewalk on that side of the park.
Starts at Everian, is that what you told me?
Go ahead.
Starts at Everian and goes down to Ann Street.
Right. That's in the plan to put new sidewalk there.
Yeah.
Um, if, if I could bother y'all for a little bit of direction so that we can finalize this, if you'll tell me what you'd like me to look at. I think what you see here is pretty, uh, you can always add sidewalks everywhere, but this is a good start to, um, trying to, to finish off at least the perimeter of the city so people have an opportunity to use these sidewalks from point. And what we did basically was, is if you ever go to, and the reason that you see trying to tie in on the south side is every time I go down there, especially from 5:30 to 7:30, there's, once the sidewalk ends, there's people all over the place walking in the streets, running, walking their dogs. And then on the north side, there's no place at all in a couple of these areas, and I, I had talked to Commissioner Evans. Uh, we really need to tie in that sidewalk on Blanton into the recreation area in front of the housing project. Um, but, uh, overall, I think this is, uh, is, I guess as good as you're gonna get for the 490,000 that you have. And, uh, once we put this into place, I'd like y'all to please endorse it. And if there, if you really have something you want to change, uh, please bring it to us, we'll get, we, we can review it and change it or what have you, but I think that this is something that you can live with and that you can have in your notebook or whatever until we get it completed. And the general public, uh, I believe we owe it to them, just like we do on the paving, to let them know where this is all going. And that way, they, it's identifiable to the general public.
Thank you, Brent, let me ask you this, when will paving?
Um, we're waiting on a contract back, we were hoping to bring it before you today, but, um, due to, um, um, uncontrolled circumstances, uh, most paving contractors don't know what a contract is, they think when they get the bid, they just get it, and we're working that out. You will have it next commission meeting, all right?
Let me ask you one question.
Yes, sir.
On Circus Street, you know, in the past, a lot of people say I've been getting a, a mountain standard citation for walking in the roadway for the alley, so you're supposed to walk, there's no sidewalk in that area, walk on.
I'll talk to the chief, I didn't realize that we were citing people rocking in the roadway, but maybe I'm out of the loop on that.
When I was department, that was the case, maybe, walking the roadway.
Okay.
Even on 13th Street until they got, uh, the sidewalks put in there.
Circus is a dead end, I wouldn't think that folks get something.
You have a lot of people walking.
Right, but I wouldn't, I would hope you wouldn't get a ticket for walking on that street because of the traffic. Uh, well, it's, it's, all right. Any, any other comments, please? Yes, no, maybe, we'll see y'all later.
Have a great.
And I'll leave this map.
Have a great, Chris. Thank you, sir. Thanks, Chris.
Okay, we'll move into the agenda.
Uh, Ms. Ward, before we go into the agenda, could we get some clarification on our, uh, workshop retreat work session that y'all mentioned at the last meeting? I sent out an email suggesting that we do it at our next, uh, regular meeting day, which I believe is November the 9th.
I won't be here then.
And I didn't get very much response.
I'm gonna tell you that, so I won't be here then.
Okay, is there?
Tuesday before Thanksgiving, we're gonna be.
I'll be here, yeah, I mean.
I thought it was me.
I think we, we never, we always have that meeting, don't we? So, yeah.
Oh, yeah, I mean, that's a regular scheduled meeting day, we don't.
Okay.
So if y'all want to do it on the 23rd and start at nine o'clock and go.
Until finish.
Until.
Service the Thanksgiving meal.
Okay, we're planning on the 23rd then. Okay, on the regular agenda tonight, our monthly recognition of our employees of the month, uh, which is a team approach this time. We'll recognize three of our, uh, Information Technology Center employees. Uh, we also have a proclamation recognizing November as National Hospice Care Month. And we will have several people here tonight to receive that proclamation. Uh, Skipper Burns and Steve Traywick and Eddie Grogan, and possibly one or two more will be here to receive that proclamation.
Are you gonna, is that three different, I mean, the same proclamation presented to three or four different people?
Yes, ma'am, it's only one proclamation.
Yeah, but I would.
Some of them are.
Yeah, but there'll be several people here to be recognized. We have a public hearing scheduled tonight, uh, regarding our millage rate, and we have advertised that, as you know, millage rate has not changed, and, but we are required to have a public hearing before adoption of that millage rate. And as I said, that's been legally advertised. Uh, consent agenda only includes the minutes of our previous meeting. There any corrections we need to make?
I didn't find any.
All righty, item five is the actual adoption of the resolution setting the millage rate. Item number six is approval to purchase four cameras for police department patrol vehicles. $21,280, this comes from, 90% of it comes from grant funds and the remainder comes from asset forfeiture. And this will give us a total of 40 cameras. Having a camera in every patrol vehicle, this will give us a total.
May I ask a question, with, with these cameras, do you film automatically every stop? So we can see any, any behavior on the policeman or the, or the perp, huh? How many short?
Okay, item number seven is a resolution for acquisition of easements on Sixth Street Bridge property, and I believe Mr. Waylon is eager to discuss that with.
Last year, you signed a contract with DOT to acquire the right-of-way for the replacement of Sixth Street Bridge. So in pursuant to that, DOT has designed the project, what you're seeing is a, a cover sheet of the project plans which shows the various project, uh, properties to be acquired, most of this is simply easements. They're gonna be slope easements for the most part, a few driveway easements, when the new bridge is built, the grade is going to differ from the existing grade. So all the properties that touch along there are gonna have to be regraded, uh, to slope out properly. The biggest acquisition of right-of-way comes from Spalding County itself. It's the property now that forms the, the first rule of parking along the edge of the street that runs just to the west side of the current bridge. So it's gonna go over to about where that divider currently is in the parking lot. Uh, there's a little bit of property that's gonna come off on the north side of Broad Street, back of the Akins property, just a small strip of about three feet. There's also gonna be some easement on that property as well with, uh, those, a fence is going to be relocated and some shed, uh, I think is going to be taken down as part of that, that project. Now, the resolution you have before you does four things, number one, you determine the necessity for the acquisition of the land, whether it's in fee simple or a lesser interest. And as I said, you do have a contract with DOT in which you agree to acquire this property for DOT. Second, you're determining that there is a public use for the acquisition of these lands. That's necessary in the event we have to go to condemnation to acquire any of these tracks. We don't believe we will, but there's a possibility, there are a couple of properties that are in either foreclosure or bankruptcy, uh, which, some easements are involved. I would hate to have to condemn for those, but right now, it looks like they've moved into hands outside of local control, so we may have that possibility. Uh, third is you're establishing the, the initial value for an offer of just compensation for each of the interests to be acquired. If you look on the second page, uh, of your resolution, uh, you'll see that four of the tracks actually belong to the city of Griffin itself. The largest is Track Eight, or Parcel Eight, which is the lower end of your parking lot along Broad Street just to the west of the bridge, which it butts up to the Norfolk Southern property. Well, we're treating all of those as donations by the city, and actually, you'll get the parking lot back, or most of the parking lot will come back to you after construction's completed. That's going to be the staging area for the contract during construction. The, uh, Norfolk Southern is going to have to give us a new, uh, easement, it's gonna be an air rights easement in order to allow the bridge to exist over their railroad right-of-way. DOT has arranged to negotiate that, they have better relations, I hope, with, with the railroad than most cities do. So, uh, hopefully, they're gonna do that. And then, as you can see, the rest of it, um, Track Six is the, the county track, that's the, the largest taking of any actual right-of-way in fee simple. Uh, coming off there, everything else is gonna be either permanent or temporary easement, uh, for the process. And then the last thing you do in the resolution is you authorize your city manager or his designated agent to begin the negotiation with the property owners. Uh, we've actually had some contact already, uh, with some of these folks on a tentative basis. And we're at the point now, the project date got moved up, Brent, what is it now?
Uh, next.
May of next year, so we, we're about to rock and roll and get started on this one.
We've already asked the county to, to give us.
They're contemplating it now, yes.
Okay, ready to move on?
Yep.
All right, item number eight is consider low bidder Griffin Fence Company to install a chain link fence and a gate. Uh, this particular area of our parking lot is down behind the electric department basement, behind the drive-throughs. Uh, we have employees here 24/7 that come into SysOps and they go in and out that door. We've had some vandalism of their personal vehicles that have been parked down in that area, uh, some thefts from vehicles and some, uh, characters down there sleeping and being down there when some of our employees are going in and out. So what we'd like to do is fence that area off so the vehicles that are there on weekends and night can be secured. Uh, we have a quote from Griffin Fence, which is a vinyl coated chain link with a motorized gate. And then on the side that's more visible, we're going to put ornamental aluminum fence to make it look a little better. Uh, so the quotes for Griffin Fence to install the chain link and the, the gate, and we're going to buy the aluminum and our people can install that.
Do you have a camera there?
Uh, we do now.
Good, I was, because that, that's the, gives you security and you know what's coming and going.
And lighting, is lighting adequate?
Uh, it's, it's probably not adequate, but it's, it's all we have, but you get up under, there's a little cubby hole back up under there. Uh, and it really doesn't matter how well it's lit, you could pretty much hi, anybody could pretty much get up under there and, and, uh, be secluded, so.
You can't fence it at all?
Well, that's what we're gonna do with this.
That's the one you, so.
Yes, ma'am, it won't be accessible once we get this fence up.
Is, uh, Griffin Fence the only, uh, exment that we have?
Uh, they, they were the low bidder, we had, uh, you recall how many bids, we had three bids and they were the low bidder.
Yeah, they're in here.
Two in here.
Uh, item number nine is a sale of some excess reserve capacity to a contract with the city of Buford. Not a whole lot of money, but almost $10,000 anyway. That's a one-year contract for 2011.
Several months, a year ago, Bill, you talked about the ability to negotiate sales outside of MEAG individually, this is one of those that.
This, this is, we've got about $20,000 in physical sales this year, um, just private sales, this is not our normal sale, access capacity. This is just separate deals that we made with other businesses.
And I assume it's less than you anticipated because of the economy, is that true?
Uh, we're not big one, um, I won't let it all back yet, but we're, we're hoping to have some separate sales done by May.
Oh, make it.
But this is not part of our normal access sales, our access sales are, are tracked on budget.
We'll make it sooner than that so commissioners get their Christmas bonus, okay?
Uh, item number 10, it's normally been our practice to cancel our regular meeting the final week in December. So that's just approval to do that if that's the board's wishes.
Okay.
Make a motion to adjourn.